Good evening. The June 4, 2018 meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. We ask you to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And as I introduced Mr. Grasso, who will say the invocation, I didn't get a chance to talk to him before, but I just want to remind everyone that the National Guardsman, Staff Sergeant Edison Herman, who tragically but heroically lost his life saving another, was a resident of Anarondle County and lived in Severn, and we want to remember him in our prayer. Mr. Grasso.
Yep, and Mr. Chairman, that gentleman lives in my district, so there's a moment of silence for him for a real true hero. I wish we had more and more people like Mr. Herman, that's for sure. All right, bow your heads, please, in the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Here we are, Lord, once again, asking for your guidance to help us do the best we can for the people of Anarondle County and to help the council always understand and the people of Anarondle County that we work for the taxpayers, and we will do the best that we always can do for them each and every day. Amen. Amen in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening once again. Madam Secretary, I would ask you to read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Trumbauer, I understand you have a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, may I go down?
Absolutely. There's some boats double parked out in the street.
So, ladies and gentlemen, we have a treat with us tonight. I'm very honored to introduce you to the Annapolis Dragon Boat Club. And if you're wondering to yourself, what is a dragon boat? These are the individuals who paddle the dragon boat, and they are all cancer survivors. And they're not just any Dragon Boat Club. First and foremost, they're the Annapolis Dragon Boat Club, but secondly, they hold the world record, I believe, the world record for paddling dragon boats, which they achieved right here in Spa Creek. So, yes, and so for a half marathon. So there is a world record established right here in my district in Anarondle County. And not only that, but these folks are being honored by going in July to the International Dragon Boat Festival, which is in, I believe, Florence, Italy. Yes. So on behalf of my six colleagues on the county council, what we have here is a citation signed by all seven members of us, and I'll just take a second to read it. This is the Anarondle County of Maryland citation, "An expression of congratulations presented to the Annapolis Dragon Boat Club. The county council is proud to present your team with this citation congratulating you on your Guinness Book of World Records achievement in completing a half marathon paddling on Spa Creek in two hours forty-nine minutes with twenty-two paddlers, steersmen, and drummer, all of whom are breast cancer survivors. We celebrate your upcoming participation in the 2018 participatory dragon boat Florence Festival in Italy in the summer and wish you continued success. Your dedication to your team is noteworthy appraise, and we are very proud supporters of your team. The county council thanks you for your inspirational representation of Anarondle County and breast cancer survivors." Thank you guys so much. And then, do you have someone to take a picture, or would you like my official photographer? So make sure you can see everybody.
Take care.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And absolutely. And as you guys make your way back to your seats, I do just want to call special attention, if you didn't recognize her, Gail Smith is here, who used to be—Gail is a former legislative aide for the county council, so we're pleased to welcome you back to council chambers, Gail.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Councilman Trumbauer. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject that is not included on the printed agenda with remarks limited to two minutes, please. And I have just one name, I think, on the list signed up, which is Richard Smith. Mr. Smith, would you join us, please? And please give your name and address for the record in two minutes. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Richard Smith. I live at 12 North Southwood in the Homewood area, and I've had opportunity over the last two months to attend a number of these sessions, and I just wanted to express how grateful I am for the experience. I find that the council treats one another with professionalism and a dignity and a courtesy that I find inspiring, and no less so, or even more so, the fact that you extend it to all the folks that sit here at this table. So thank you. I also wanted to say how inspired I've been by the benedictions, and in particular by Councilman Smith's oration on the bullying, so thank you for that. So I think you probably get out of boys all the time, but I just wanted to convey from the bottom of my heart that I think that everyone here is doing excellent work, and I wanted to thank you. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate it. And I don't think we would agree that we get out of boys all the time. So we'll gratefully and humbly accept it. Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for being here tonight. So is there anyone else who would like to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda? Please come forward at this time. Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. For the last two meetings, I've been trying to tell you the story about my encountering a young couple who really did not understand, and they were sincere, I believe, they really did not understand why some people become so upset with a noose. And I told them the story of the man named Judge Aaron. He was not a judge, he was a handyman, painter's helper, yard work, all kinds of work. And I explained to you that in Birmingham, Alabama, there was a branch of the Ku Klux Klan that was having an election, and they said, if you're going to be elected to office in this group, you've got to really do something. And so this group of six men went out, abducted Judge Aaron, abducted him, took him to a place, beat him, threatened, intimidated. One of the men used some form of razor to cut off his scrotum. They put it in a cup so they could prove what they had done to this poor innocent man. They loaded him up, dumped him out on the highway, well, actually in the grass. Fortunately, he was able to crawl out of the grass. He was expected to die. He nearly died. You know, he nearly bled to death. But he was able to recover, and they actually prosecuted the men involved. And I got as far as telling you that four of the men were convicted to 20 years. I don't think I got to the part where I told you that when George Wallace was elected governor of Georgia, he pardoned those four men that were convicted for 20 years. They restored their voting rights and restored, you know, all rights to run for office and everything else. Two men who turned state's evidence were not so pardoned.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
I'm going to get to the rest of it.
We look forward to that.
It's pretty awful, Mr. Peruka.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for your presentation. We will now close the invitation to the audience, and I'd ask, is there any item that any council member would like to place on the agenda? Mr. Walker?
Oh, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I was—I'll be withdrawing Bill 3418.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Fink?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like to introduce Bill 6418. I didn't get it in on time to hit tonight's printed agenda.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you read Bill 6418 into the record, please?
Bill number 6418, "An ordinance concerning subdivision and development general provisions adequate public facilities for the purpose of grandfathering certain applications for subdivision and site development concerning adequate school facilities, providing for the application of this ordinance and generally relating to subdivision and development."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion that—the—oh, no, yeah. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes a reading of the whole?
Some more, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May 21, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruka at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Move to adopt the minutes as read?
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the May 21, 2018 meeting stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 5818, "An ordinance concerning planning and development, master plan for land preservation, parks, and recreation." Bill number 5918, "An ordinance concerning personnel exempt service, deputy planning and zoning officer." Bill number 6018, "An ordinance concerning personnel exempt service, deputy director, emergency management office." Bill number 6118, "An ordinance concerning personnel positions in the classified service." Bill number 6218, "An ordinance concerning the issuance sale and delivery of Anarondle County, Maryland general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes." Bill number 6318, "An ordinance concerning animal control, dogs and cat licenses, dangerous animals."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening?
Resolution number 1518, "Resolution proposing an amendment to the charter of Anarondle County restricting the county council to increase the minimum value of purchases and contracts requiring full competitive bidding from $25,000 to an amount not less than $25,000 and not greater than $50,000, or a greater amount determined by the county council to be in the best interests of the county, and requiring that the award of contracts greater than $5,000 and less than the minimum dollar requirement for full competitive bidding shall be awarded through a simplified competitive process except as otherwise provided by law, and requiring that the county purchasing agent shall cause to be published on the Anarondle County website all awards of contracts through the full and simplified bidding process for capital improvements, contractual services, professional services, or supplies of $5,000 or greater awarded by the county in accordance with the Anarondle County Code. Bill number—Resolution number 1618, "Resolution approving the declaration of certain unimproved county-owned property formerly known as a portion of Drum Point Avenue between Governor Ritchie Highway and lots 5082, 5083, and 5084 in Glen Burnie, Maryland as surplus property." Resolution number 1718, "Resolution approving the declaration of certain unimproved county-owned property formerly known as a portion of Drum Point Avenue between Governor Ritchie Highway and lots 5079, 5080, and 5081 in Glen Burnie, Maryland as surplus property."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So now may I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1418 out of order?
Some more, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1418 out of order is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the title of Resolution 1418?
Resolution number 1418, "Resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to Paragon Bioservices, Inc."
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Marzick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office with me at the table, Julie Musog from Economic Development Corporation, and Jason Federman from the Office of Law. Resolution 1418 offers the council support for $600,000 Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority Fund loan to a new business in Anarondle County. Paragon Bioservices is leasing $151,000 square feet in Hanover for its corporate headquarters and is investing $45 million in build-out and equipment. Paragon will be hiring 200 new full-time employees for a total of 400 permanent full-time employees by 2022. This resolution is a requirement of state code to have council approval of this. We ask for your support tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Are there any questions? Mr. Walker?
I was just wondering, so we have to vote on this tonight?
Well, we're hearing it out of order for that purpose.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't know that we have to, but that's—
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so I'm clear, because obviously it just got introduced, and the auditor hasn't weighed in and everything, I just want to make sure—
No, this was introduced.
Oh, it was?
It's just been heard out of order, that's all.
Oh, okay.
No, no, this was introduced.
Okay, so it is in the blue letter?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I withdraw my question.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Anybody else? Mr. Fink?
Blue letter answered my question.
Anybody else? All right, then, we will open the public hearing for Resolution 1418. If anyone would like to come and testify on 1418, please come forward at this time.
I do have a question.
Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have some questions about how we wind up having these things come before the council. The taxpayers are really the source of the funds that are going to be lent to these people. A lot of the taxpayers were really upset with what happened with the huge amounts of money lent out to companies like Solyndra. It sounded good, but it was a total economic loss. Now, what is it that these people are doing for the county? You've mentioned a lot of jobs, but what are they actually doing? You may remember the problem with Enron. They were rolling in the dough, their stock was soaring through the roof. You know, these were the economic whiz kids and wonder kids. Only problem was that they really didn't have a business, and when this all came out, everything crashed. The teachers in California largely lost their pensions, the employees all across, you know, the West, from Washington State to Texas and lots of places in between, lost not only their employment, but their pensions and their savings. So I think that when someone presents a bill like this, I would request that it be a matter of standard operating procedure to provide, this is what this company does, this is, you know, the kind of market that they have, these are the products and services that they will sell, these are the kinds of things that they will need to purchase from other businesses in the community, whether it's office supplies, or cleaning services, or whatever it is that will be generating ancillary, you know, economic growth. And this never seems to come out in these hearings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there anybody else who would like to testify on this matter? Here's sign no movement. We'll close the public hearing on Resolution 1418. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink?
I do have a question for Bernie or Economic Development. The grant—I know this resolution doesn't necessarily provide the grant, but it looks like we're going to have to provide a $60,000 grant for jobs training. Is that money—is that grant money from the state or the federal government, or is that from the county's general fund?
It's from Economic Development's fund balance.
Through the general fund?
Well, it would have been at some point, but, you know, Economic Development carries fund balance year-to-year. Workforce training grants are a normal part of services that we offer, and so this would just be a part of that. It's a reimbursable grant up to 50% right now. The—we're working on the training program that they're going to be doing, and they're going to do the majority of the training through the community college. So as they do the training, we will reimburse 50% as they prove out through invoices and the names of the employees that they're training.
And this is training for manufacturing, so are these individuals disadvantaged? Are they—I mean, can anybody qualify for this?
For this position? I'm sure there's very specific requirements for some of these positions. Like I said, they're hiring up to 400 people. This is a high-tech bio-manufacturing. They're relocating from Baltimore, where they outcrewed their space there and needed a bigger facility and decided—
And how does Economic Development decide who they give training grants to?
So all businesses are eligible if they meet our criteria. This particular training grant is simply because this is part of the MEDAF program. When they were looking to move and grow and expand at such a rate, the state became involved and decided that this was a good MEDAF program, giving the large number of jobs, and it's actually very high-salary jobs. These jobs are about $80,000 a year. And so the state then, you know, as part of doing a statement of capabilities to them to propose keeping the business in Maryland and moving it to Anarondle County, a piece of the MEDAF program is that the county has to have a match put in. So that's always run through Economic Development, given that there doesn't need to be any additional fund appropriation, since we have some fund balance and we have resources to put towards this.
Sure. And do we know if they're Anarondle County residents, the folks that we're training?
They will be, most of them. I mean, certainly they're going to be working there in Hanover, but the desire is that they would mostly be Anarondle County employees.
But there's no requirement. They could still be in Baltimore, just making the commute every day, or Baltimore County or Howard County. And in that case, we would get no economic benefit from that employee.
Well, the company is investing $45 million in construction costs within Anarondle County in furnitures, fixtures, and, like you said, these people are going to launch shopping within the county and presumably providing other economic growth.
Yeah, sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, this is your area. Are you aware of this grant and the company? And I just want to make sure that you're okay with it.
Well, I'm aware of the resolution and its intent and purpose, and so I was supportive of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? For my part, I'd like to add a word of agreement with Ms. Johnson. I think that this is the kind of thing that would be—that would be good to have a work session about. This isn't alone in that category. There's a lot of things I think that we benefit when we get to ask questions and have some discussion that's prior to the legislative session. So that's all I have. Madam Secretary, would you then please call the roll on Resolution 1418?
I haven't read it in for vote yet, sir. Resolution number 1418, "Resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to Paragon Bioservices, Inc."
Thank you. Now will you—thank you. Call the roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution number 1418 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 3418 as amended.
Bill number 3418 is amended, "An ordinance concerning zoning cosmetic facial hair salons."
Thank you. Mr. Fink is the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had the first public hearing, last meeting, had an amendment. I don't really have anything to add to that.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? Mr. Marzick?
We support the bill, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr—so we'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to testify on this matter? Is there a sign up for this? All right. Sign no movement. We'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 3418 as amended.
Bill number 3418 is amended, "An ordinance concerning zoning cosmetic facial hair salons."
Thank you. Any last discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 3418 as amended.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
I don't know.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3418 as amended is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill number 4918.
Bill number 4918, "An ordinance concerning licensing food service facilities, polystyrene food service products."
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink?
Before Mr. Trumbauer goes off, I just want to put on public record that I'm a partner in several restaurants in Anarondle County that could be affected by this bill, but I do plan on participating. But I did want the record to show that I am putting one there, that I have several restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fink, Mr. Trumbauer, would you begin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I thought perhaps Mr. Fink was wanting to weigh in and become a co-sponsor, but there's still time to do that. With that, I do want to thank my two existing co-sponsors, my colleague, Mr. Pruski, and my other colleague, Mr. Grasso, for your support. What I want to do is give a brief overview of what this bill does. I think we've all received a number of communications and emails and calls about this, but essentially, this takes expanded polystyrene foam, defines it, and then prohibits the use of that material in the county by food service businesses. Why would we want to do this? Essentially, because it's my belief, and I think that there's science and data to show this, that this particular material ends up as harmful litter, not only in, you know, roadways and ditches, but ultimately in our waterways. And as we're very proud of in Anarondle County, we are a jurisdiction full of waterways. We have more tidal shoreline than any other local jurisdiction around, and lots of streams and creeks and rivers. The problem with expanded polystyrene foam is it never really goes away. It just breaks down into smaller and smaller pieces, and then this can end up in our waterways. It can contaminate them and affect our marine wildlife and aquatic organisms. So I've heard people say, well, you know, why don't we just recycle it? Right now, there's no way to do that in Anarondle County. I have spoken to our Department of Public Works, tried to learn a little bit more about this. My understanding is that it is technically possible to recycle this material, but it has to be very clean, and it has to be—we have to have special equipment called a densifier, which is something the county does not currently own. I'm not aware of any jurisdictions in this area that do recycle polystyrene foam. So quite frankly, I would like to get this out of the waste stream. There are other existing alternative materials that are more sustainable, that would degrade better, and also, I don't think pose as much of a risk of litter potential, because one of the problems with foam is it's very lightweight. It's 95—98% air, something like that, so it blows around a lot. It can blow out of a trash truck. It can blow out of a trash container. When it's getting transported to a facility, it may blow out. So the other thing about it is, I've heard the industry talk about how it's less expensive and it holds up great for messy items. Well, I'm sure it is less expensive, and I'm sure that it's great for barbecue and other things, but recycling this material certainly can't be done if it's dirtied with —or contaminated with barbecue sauce or other materials. So I just really want to get it out of the waste stream. I think it's time for Anarondle County to join the club. Several other jurisdictions in Maryland and Washington, D.C. have similarly prohibited this, and there's a companion legislation being considered right now in the city of Annapolis. So very briefly, if you look at the bill, the first section is just a definition. It says what expanded polystyrene is, and the reason that's important is because you hear it talked a lot about Styrofoam. Styrofoam is an actual brand. It's a trademark. It would be like talking about Kleenex as opposed to tissue, so we want to be sure that we're talking about the right material. And then the second thing is it prohibits the use of expanded polystyrene food service products. So if this bill is to pass, these food services cannot use that anymore, and then it sets up the violation and directs the Health Department to enforce this. There's a couple other important provisions of this bill. Number one, there's a considerable grace period to allow businesses to use their existing stock, so we have this starting in September 1 of 2019, so that's about maybe 15 months or so of a grace period. And then, secondly, provided in Section 2, I believe, that there will be a warning given. So, you know, if by some means a business was not aware or didn't quite understand, they're not going to get slapped with a fine right away. Our intent is to get this material out of the waste stream, not to penalize our businesses. Then the last thing, in the non-codified language, we do reference an education and outreach program, and there are several community organizations like Annapolis Green that have volunteered and stepped up to help get the awareness out. So with that, I know we have a pretty decent sign-up list, and I'm sure the administration wants to say something, so I will close my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Mr. Pruski is also a sponsor.
Yes. I want to thank Mr. Trumbauer for certainly introducing this, and I signed on, but I wanted to add two things that were mentioned. First of all, there are restaurants and other businesses that have done this on their own, which are currently in their national, actually, national chains. And in addition, similar to coal tar, which this council took a stand on, and if you go back all the way to asbestos and other things, when you know something's bad and you take a stand on it, I think it's important to look at that. If not now, when? And I think really, that's the point that we're trying to make with this bill, and I hope the colleagues and others support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Mr. Grasso is also a sponsor.
Yeah. I also, like I said, even if, like Councilman Trumbauer was saying, that we were able to get this product recycled, fact of the matter is how much of it, wouldn't even make it into the recycling stream. And so, the county's very proactive right now in trying to clean our waterways up. You know, everybody knows about the, we're like a 70% goal right now under the Stormwater Restoration Act, and this is just another problem that we need to take care of. It's just as bad as plastic bags that we need to look at very closely. And for your folks also that use baby wipes, they're very bad for Anaronda County. The baby wipes, they say they're flushable, but the problem is, is those items go down and they get caught up in our pumps, and many of these pumps, what can happen is these baby wipes can actually block up the pumps, and then sewage will actually come out of the ground and start flowing into the creeks. So, the money that we're actually spending for new pumping stations and generators to keep spills from going in the creek can actually be expedited through baby wipes. And several years ago, I was trying to put together some kind of legislation that would forbid baby wipes in the system, because they get into the sewer system and start clogging up the sewer line, and unless the county can get somebody down there fast enough to clean the baby wipes up, it can cause a serious environmental hazard. And the question is, is it worth the billions that we are spending for a baby wipe? And that's the thing we have to ask here. So, thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Trumbauer. Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Mr. Trumbauer?
Very briefly, thank you. Thank you for your remarks, Mr. Grasso, and your co-sponsorship. I just want to reiterate, this legislation doesn't speak to baby wipes.
Right.
We'll stick to expanded foam for this one.
Okay.
Mr. Trumbauer's working.
Thank you. Mr. Marsick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bernie Marsick in the County Executive's Office. I know Fran Phillips from the Health Department is here, as well as Chris Phipps from Public Works, and Greg Swain is at the table. I guess I'll put on the record, too, the county executive is involved in restaurant businesses in the county as well, as Mr. Fink put on the record. The administration opposes this bill. I'd like to touch on three items that I talked to the sponsor of the bill about as well. We have asked the Department of Public Works and the Health Department to look at this issue from both a public health and environmental standpoint, and we're not able to find a reason to be supportive of this bill or to feel this bill is necessary at this point. First, I want to talk about three different items. First, there are no health risks with expanded polystyrene for food or beverage packaging. I think the issue you touched on about the coal tar, we did find that there were health risks with that. EPS is nontoxic, and it's also very effective at keeping food at the temperature it needs to be kept at. Some advocates in the past have argued about the health issues served with these containers, but the U.S. Food and Drug Administration considers these to be safe containers for food. Second, pollution issue that Mr. Trumbauer touched on, we agree with you 100%. All pollution is bad. We think that pollution provider, litter provided from these containers is an issue that needs to be dealt with in the county, but pollution from plastic bags, from cigarette butts, from potato chip bags, from all kinds of pollution is bad, and we feel that we shouldn't be drafting legislation narrowly or wonder what would come next. We think that litter is litter, and it shouldn't be tolerated in any form in the county. We're making every effort to clean up the county throughout the different communities, all throughout the county. We have put in our budget this year an extra $417,000 for our beautification efforts that we touched on in our budget hearings. In addition, DPW is considering, or is looking for an opportunity to recycle this product in the county. They have expanded their effort by trying to work with Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority to cast a wider net, to find a willing partner to recycle this product on the county level, along with the others that are done on the private side in the county. There's actually one, Angon Crofton, has a facility where this can be recycled. Third and last, this bill is a tax increase on small businesses in the county. The products that are the, will have to replace these foam containers will be a two to three times more expensive than the existing. I did the Grasso effort and went down to the cafeteria and talked to the folks about the containers they use and the price they came back with. For the alternatives, was two to three times more expensive. I did the same, looked at Sam's Club for the same products, where a lot of these small businesses get these, and the prices are two to three times more expensive for these. And we feel that this tax increase will be passed on to consumers, who are either going to be paying more for the same product, or on to the small businesses that would face that tax increase and have to take a cut in their business profits. So, for these reasons, we would ask you to oppose this bill. We have to answer any questions, the council has.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
And Mr. Phipps, and Mrs. Phillips as well.
Mr. Marsick, and what would you say probably we're at in lineup as far as recyclable, what we're doing in Anaronda County, you know, out of 100%? Where are we at as probably, as far as recycling our actual trash?
I'll defer to Mr. Phipps on that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Good evening, council. Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. We have a residential recycling program, and in the, from an aggregate standpoint, we recycle, our rates between 43, 44%. Now, the maximum, what we, you know, through the studies, we've determined a household of all the waste that's generated, including trash and recyclables, that optimally, you could get 60% of the household-generated debris could be recycled. So, we believe we still have a margin of 16, 17% to pick up.
Okay. So, it's safe to say, "I'm going to go operate on the premise of 50%, and we'll split it down the middle. 40, 60, we'll say 50%." So, it's pretty much safe to say that even if we did come up with a way to recycle this product, we still got 50% that is not being recycled. Is that fair to say?
Correct, and, but 60% is the maximum you can recycle, that there's still going to be a 40% residual that you can't recycle, plastic bags and just trash that's contaminated. There is no market.
Right. So, 60 is the most that you can do, which basically means 40% is out there that can break down, wind up in the streams, start going down to little pieces, and I'm on the creek, folks, and we have snapping turtles that are about this big, look like large cheese pizzas, okay? They see this going across the water, and they snap the stuff out of it, and if they can't pass it, or the fish can't pass it, they die. So, my issue over here is that the number that I got is that from a container that, of styrofoam, to going to a more suitable container, is how much would you say, Bernie, a piece? A nickel, six cents?
The numbers that we saw, it was double or triple. So, I think you're talking about from nine to 18 cents were the rough numbers that I found, or three to eight cents, or six to 12 cents.
Okay. So, in reality, if I was to get a chicken box, okay, three chicken wings and french fries, instead of me paying $4.75, I would have to pay $4.90. I don't think 15 cents is going to set me back or anybody else back for 15 cents to do what's better for the environment. I mean, heck, we still got bags, plastic bags going out there. They are everywhere, so why don't we have something where we're not even dealing with plastic bags here? People should have to bring their own cloth bags, or back to paper bags that actually break down. And one thing that I've learned, that sometimes, always the cheapest way isn't the best way. It's almost similar to like, when you really like food that's really tasty, it's probably no good for you. Just what it is. So, in this situation here, it's cheap, but it's no good for the, it's no good for the environment and for, you know, everything else that's tied together over there. So, we're actually arguing 15 cents, that if the person was to raise the price of a chicken wing 15 cents, and what we're going to do is, we're going to just keep putting the junk into our system. And I just can't justify 15 cents. I can't. So, that's my take on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Grasso and all of my colleagues, you may not have had a chance to review it all, but the folks from Trash Free Maryland did provide some cost comparisons in their packet, and I know we're going to hear about cost comparisons from the industry side and from the advocate side, and we'll see if their numbers match up or not. But I did, I did want to take a second to address the recycling issue, because right now, Mr. Phipps, we operate on single-stream recycling for residential. So, that means I put my aluminum cans, I put my paper, I put my glass, I put that all in the yellow bin, and dutifully, every Monday morning, I walk it out and it gets recycled. Sometimes, I have to fill up two bins. We recycle a lot. But this, even if the county decided to pursue a EPS recycling program, it could not be a single stream. Is that correct?
I think, you know, it gets a little bit discretionary in terms of how much material residue makes it into the styrofoam itself. You know, chicken wings probably has enough grease and stuff that's going to contaminate that material such that it's not going to be usable for recycling, but some might be, if, you know, that's clean enough, that it could go through the packing recycle.
But I guess my point is, if the county were to make the investment to acquire a densifier, which is, I believe that's the equipment needed to recycle this material, then that waste stream would need to go to the place with the densifier, and that may not be where all the rest of our material goes.
Right, but the other trick to, or key to recycling styrofoam or polystyrene is that you need to have an outlet, and what we found is, there's no, there's no outlet for it. So, we could get a densifier, we could densify the packing styrofoam, but there'd be nowhere for it to go. There's not a receptacle. So, that's what we're trying to see, is there a market that could be established in this area? Because it does happen in other places in the country where they've got maybe a more manufacturing base that can take that raw material, repurpose it into other plastics, other styrofoam uses. But right now, this area doesn't have that. That would be a challenge to overcome.
Yeah. And, Mr. Marsick, I agree with the administration's point that all litter is bad, but I feel that this particular material is something that is worth taking out of our waste stream. And as has been mentioned by Mr. Pruski, there are some local restaurants and chains that are already doing that voluntarily, and there are national brands such as McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, and I believe some others, that are either actively phasing this out or have already done so. And so, I think that this is a trend we're seeing. The most recent jurisdiction to act on foam was Baltimore City. We all know, and Mr. Grasso is fond of reminding us, that Baltimore City has a lot of challenges, but they were able to find a way to do this despite all those challenges, and I think it's frankly, time for Anaronda County to join the club. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of look at this, I guess, from a different perspective, obviously, as I stated, that we have several restaurants in this county, and, you know, I would disagree with the pricing, when I think it's a lot more than 15 cents difference to get away from a styrofoam container. And, you know, Mr. Grasso, you point out you would pay an extra 15 cents to help the environment, but restaurants don't buy these containers by one. They buy them by the case, and some of these cases are, you know, 500 in a case, so now that 15 cents times 500, you're now looking at 75 bucks. And if you've got a carryout business where everything's going in a container, that 500, 500-piece case isn't enough for a week, so now you're buying two or three of those a week, and that's an extra, you know, on your mat, that 75 cents, or, I'm sorry, that 15 cents is an extra 75 bucks a case, now you have 2.25 a week, and you times that out by four, and you times that out by, you know, 12 months, and you're a lot more than 15 cents. And that is not necessarily a cost that you can give to the consumer. You know, it's very tough in a restaurant, when somebody says, "I want a to-go box," to turn around and say, "Okay, that's going to cost you a quarter." So, that cost can't really be passed on to the consumer, passed on to the individual. I think at the end of the day, you're going to see an across-the-board increase in pricing. You know, that burger that costs, you know, 12 bucks, it's going to cost 13 bucks, and so on. I also think, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Pruski, and even Mr. Trumbauer, bringing up the fact that, you know, a lot of businesses are doing this on their own. Our businesses have been doing this on our own. We only serve or use styrofoam in one of our four concepts now, and we are getting away from it, not because of any mandates or because the government's coming down on us, just because we believe it's the right thing to do, and I think that's where people are going. I don't think the consumer wants styrofoam anymore, which is ultimately what's going to change a lot of the restaurateurs' opinions on styrofoam, but I think it's a lot better when the consumers are dictating that change and not the government. You know, we've even got one concept that's gotten away from plastic straws. Not only do we not serve straws at all with our drinks anymore, upon request, we now give a paper straw. And again, this wasn't by any mandate, this was just us doing it ourselves, and as much as I'd like to take credit for it, I'm a franchisee, so I really can't take credit for it. It was kind of, kind of sent down to us to do. But my point is, it doesn't always have to be the government. The government doesn't always have to fix our problems. I think more and more people are seeing it, more and more people care. We're getting away from it on our own. When we decide to do it ourselves, it's our cost take. We're deciding, hey, it's worth the extra $75 a case, although I think it's going to be a lot more than that, because I don't buy the 15 cents difference. I think it's probably closer to a 30 cent difference between the styrofoam and some of the nicer boxes. So, with that, at the end of the day, you know, I'm practicing this in my businesses. I'm making an effort to get away from styrofoam where I have the option, but I just have a hard time dictating it to everybody in the county that, hey, you can no longer use styrofoam. I think the trend is going that way, either way, whether we pass this or not. I think you're going to see more and more businesses get away from styrofoam, but it's a lot better when they make that decision than when we do from sitting from this dais. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Grasso?
Of course, my colleague in District 3, we have complete different views on life. He's about the same age as my son, a little bit older. The problem when he makes the argument of the $75 a case is very true. However, I don't know a business in the world that doesn't add in the cost of its operating into its plate of food. There's the food cost, operating expense, and everything, and he is the chief financial officer of this business. So, he's not going to sit there and try to sell me a bunch of garbage over here that they're not going to add the cost into the $75. You go to the Italian place and you get a spaghetti dinner, or wherever the case may be, and it's 11:25. You're going to tell me that that restaurant isn't going to think that, hey, I'm probably going to have a takeout here, and I'm just going to bang the price up to 11:40. It is 15 cents. But if you listen to my colleague over here, he makes it sound like it's $75 a case. Yeah, but it's $75 a case spread over a lot of people, and it is the 15 cents. If you ever notice, if you had a cold cut business, okay, you buy a roll of paper, the restaurant pays X amount of dollars for that roll of paper, but you know how to get it back in a lot of cases? They take that piece of paper and they put it on the scale, and then they put the meat on it, okay? And some places will, you know, say, hey, you know, we're going to, we're going to knock the actual tariff weight of the piece of paper off, but you watch your cold cut places, that you go get your cold cuts, they put the piece of paper on, they put the meats on, and you will pay for that little piece of paper.
Oh, my lord.
So, the fact of the matter is, is what he's over here selling, I'm not buying. Okay? I'm not buying.
Mr. Chairman?
We have to give Mr. Grasso the benefit of counsel here for, because he's, you want to take the Fifth Amendment, Mr. Grasso, or, Mr. Fink?
We're all, we're all restaurateurs with the internet, aren't we? The, you know, Mr. Grasso, I wish that was true. You know, we've got, you know, as restaurants, you know, every day we turn around, we've got something else coming down on us that we can't pass to cost, whether it's paid sick leave, whether it's Obamacare, whether it's this, whether it's that, it's this, this increase, it's that increase. At the end of the day, a cheeseburger's only worth so much, and, you know, if we were able to pass on all these increases, I can tell you that cheeseburger would be $18, and you would be the first one raising hell, because you go to Costco every day and get your $1.50 slice of pizza. If that $1.50 slice of pizza at Costco ended up being four and a quarter, you'd be going nuts over it, and at that point, the environment would be a lot less, less important, I'm betting, when it's an extra three bucks out of your pocket. At the end of the day, you know, there's only so much you can pass on, and then a lot of it, you just got to swallow. And to-go containers are one of those things that you absolutely do swallow. And to-go containers are one of those things that you absolutely do swallow. Nobody's going to pay you for a to-go container. And that's just the way it is, that's just the reality is, nobody's going to pay me extra because I've got to give paid sick leave, nobody's going to pay me extra because we're offering health insurance to our dishwashers and everything else. So at some point, you do, when the cost of ground beef goes up, you do factor that into your pricing. But at the end of the day, there is a ceiling for what you can charge for a cheeseburger, there's a ceiling which you can charge for chicken wings, and that is what it is, and you've got to make it work. And we come up against that all day. Every time we turn around, it seems like the government's putting another thing down our throats, and this is another example. I mean, this bill is only impacting restaurants. And at the end of the day, like I said, I think we're going that way anyway. You're seeing more and more restaurants, as Mr. Trumbauer and Mr. Pruski mentioned, going this direction, but it's their choice and it's not being mandated. And that's all the difference in the world to me.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grasso?
You know, it makes an argument, all we can charge for a cheeseburger, but it's supply and demand here. So if I'm charging $4 for a cheeseburger, the guy next door is going to charge $4 for cheeseburger, because he's got the same price of the styrofoam issue that I have, okay? I explained to Mr. Fink over here, the only reason we have laws in the world are not for the people with common sense, it's for the people without the common sense. That's why we have laws. Heck, there wouldn't even be a speed limit sign there, because the majority of the people would probably have a little bit of common sense, I'm going too fast. But we put a speed limit sign out there because there's always those few that think that they can go, think it's NASCAR, and do what is. And if you notice, everything in society, the majority of the population never has to be told what to do. That law only came in place for the few that doesn't have common sense in anything in life, what I basically call dead-brain people. That's what they are, okay? Let's call it what it is, all right? So, Mr. Fink, you know, if in his world, he would never have a law. Everybody do what you want, it's a free-go-ahead-type thing. In my world, government has to govern people, but not to extrange the people. And fact of the matter is, is that if you don't govern people within reasonable things, then what happens if they all run off the cliff, like a bunch of buffaloes? So, you know, Mr. Fink has his way of thinking, I have my way of thinking, but don't let him sandbag you and think that his $4 cheeseburger isn't going to be selling next door at the next guy at $4 apiece, too, all right? It's supply and demand here, that's the way it works. And no one has a problem adding 15 cents to their cheeseburger.
Mr. Chairman, just one last point. The only place you're getting a $4 cheeseburger is fast food because of all these restrictions. It might have been $4 cheeseburger when you were a younger man, Mr. Grasso, but you're not getting $4 cheeseburgers now because of all these restrictions. You know, we're up to $12, $13, $14, $15 cheeseburgers unless you're eating fast food.
Well, and once again, the scarring.
Mr. Grasso, please.
Yeah, to rebuttal that, you know, yeah, it is, it is, there is inexpensive cheeseburgers. The Hardee's deal was $5, and pick a cheeseburger, and another sandwich, and a fry, and a chocolate-chip cookie, and a cup. And I'm sure that they could get $5.15 because they gave you a styrofoam container, but they don't. They put it in cardboard. And, you know, people, the question is, how long are you going to wait for people to do the right thing? That's the question here. Yeah, they might translate to that situation, but how long are you going to wait? When we went to the stormwater restoration foam, it was the exact same thing. Nobody wanted to pay for it, okay? But somebody had to take a stand on here, not you, but somebody had to take a stand over here, okay, and said, "It's time to clean up the waters in Anarundel County." Now today, our goals have been made at 70%. You don't see fish coming out of the water with tumors on the side of their face and flesh-eating bacteria, because some people didn't want to take a stand. They'll eventually get there, John, they'll eventually do it, whatever. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Thank you all. As informative as, as enlightening as this has been, there are members of the public who wish to weigh in on this matter. So we'll open the public hearing. I'm going to call six people here, you first six people, please come down and take these six chairs, and then we'll begin the testimony. Mr. Rick Kissel, Brian Bogardi, Ashley Vanstone, Anthony Clark, Julie Shea, and Martha Ainsworth.
As they prepare, this will be real quick.
Mr. Smith?
About six years ago, the Gazette wrote a story on the council going to lunch. And for some reason, I see a part two to the council going to lunch with this testimony today, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
I certainly, I certainly didn't think I was going to learn all this tonight, did you all? Did you all think you were going to learn all this? Let's begin with Mr. Rick Kissel, please. Name and address, please, sir, and then two minutes.
My name is Rick Kissel. I live at 717 Warren Drive, Annapolis, Maryland.
I'm sorry, Rick, can you pull that up a little closer to you? You're not.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Okay, Rick Kissel, 717 Warren Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. Good evening. I'm vice chair of the Annapolis, Anarundel, excuse me, Anarundel Sierra Club Group, and speaking on behalf of our 1,700 members who live in Anarundel County. We are speaking for the motion to ban EPS, Expanded Polystyrene Food Containers, in the county. It's one of our top priorities. The presentation I'm going to give right now, that I just handed out to you, this is an abbreviated form of the longer presentation that all of you have. I sent it out a couple days ago to you. We support this bill. My talk comes in about four sections. This is the environment section. We support it because EPS litter is especially harmful to marine environment. Once it's broken, the little toxin-bearing beads in the waterways, it is impossible to clean it up, virtually impossible to clean up those little beads that get in the water. Anarundel County has 500 miles of shoreline. Stormwater blows it in, it blows in any way you can think of, and it never deteriorates. Never, never. It is forever. A lot of other stuff deteriorates and settles and gets sequestered in the mud or whatever, or goes into powder or something else. Not EPS, never deteriorates. It affects the marine animals. What was that? That's not for me. Oh, no! No, it can't be. I have three more things.
We have your written.
You've got mine. Okay, we'll read it carefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. We used up all your time already. I'm sorry about that. Brian Bogardi. Oh, I'm saying your name wrong. Excuse me, Bryn? I apologize. Excuse me.
Good evening. My name's Bryn Bogard. I live at 617 Canal Lane in Annapolis. I'm a junior at Broadneck High School. So every school in the county has a signature program, and for my school, it's environmental literacy. And because of this, and our extremely close proximity to the bay, and the incredible science courses that are available to our students, our students at our school, like those in many other counties, I mean, many other schools in Annapolis are extremely environmentally aware and knowledgeable. And I've taken almost all of the science courses offered at Broadneck, so I can assure you that every one of them has touched on the environmental impact that our actions have, not only on the surrounding environments and the animals that call them home, but to the future generations. And then every day I go to school and I take these classes, and I learn about the destructive effects of substances like expanded polystyrene foam. Then I go to lunch and see hundreds of students carrying lunches around on the white foam lunch trays made of this foam, who then effortlessly dump them into trashcans once they're done because they have no other option. And to me, this seems sort of contradictory, because we are taught the detrimental effects of these substances, but then are given no other option but to use them every single day, and negatively impacting the environment. Therefore, as a representative of Broadneck High School and the students of Anarundel County, I'm in complete support of a ban on expanded polystyrene foam.
Thank you, Ms. Bogard. Appreciate it. Ashley Vanstone?
Hi, you have my name. I live at 1913. 1913 East Lombard Street, Baltimore, Maryland. I serve as the executive director of Trash Free Maryland, an organization that focuses on mitigating and preventing litter through policy and programmatic work. And we base those efforts by looking at the most significant contributors to trash pollution that we identify through cleanup data and reports by local governments. It's estimated that 80% of marine pollution starts on land, and that roughly 90% of what we're seeing in this plastics crisis in our oceans is plastic. Whether it's from trash traps on the Anacostia River tributaries, the trash wheels in the inner harbor in Harris Creek outfall, or through volunteer cleanups around the state, we know that food packaging is a significant portion of this litter. And the nature of this product is particularly problematic, as Councilman Trumbauer elucidated before. It is fragile, and it breaks very easily, and it's lightweight, so it's carried easily by wind or by water from our streets into our waterways. It does not biodegrade, it photodegrades. So that means it just breaks up into infinitely smaller pieces that stay in the water, and they're very difficult to clean up, and if you can get them, that's great. But most of the time, they stay there and become food for our marine life, much of which our industries around this area rely on. And finally, they can absorb 10 times more toxins and chemicals than other commonly littered items, which is really significant. So as you're thinking about marine life mistaking these plastic particles for food, they're taking that in, and we can think about it killing them, but we're still only beginning to scratch the surface from an investigative standpoint on what that means in terms of what we are ingesting down the line. Because of this and its similar nature to microbeads marring our landscapes in our waterways, the EPA has identified three regions of concern, the Baltimore Harbor, the Anacostia River, and the Elizabeth River. And we know that when EPS foam is actually captured, it makes up 25 to 40% of that litter by volume. So really important to note volume versus percent measurement.
Thank you, Ms. Vanstone. Appreciate it. Thanks for your testimony. Anthony Clark, not here. Julie Shea?
Yes, can I defer to? When did you go? Okay. So we, just on the...
Oh, excuse me. Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Julie Shea, 605 Red Oak Court, Severna Park, Maryland, your district.
Thank you.
We, I am a volunteer with the Anarundel Sierra Club, and when we knew about this, when I learned about this coming before you guys, I started to do a brief survey with a couple of other volunteers in the districts, the odd-numbered districts, as a matter of fact, 1, 3, 5, and 7, to take a look at what the businesses are already doing or already using, whether they're using styrofoam or polystyrene rather, or other materials for their takeout containers and their doggy bag containers, their leftover containers. And what we found was that, we did a quick survey, just because we were short on time. So we hit kind of Brooklyn Park, Glen Burnie, Crofton and Pasadena areas, and found 63 restaurants and eateries. And of those, there was only one that was using exclusively polystyrene. Everybody else had alternative materials for their containers that were predominantly reusable. So there's just one place, it was a buffet, carryout, eat-in, and for their takeout, they had the polystyrene. But everybody else has other alternatives, so in other words, they're able and interested in buying. As a side, a lot of the people that we talked to who have already switched, some have already switched, others are very interested in switching. People voluntarily said, "I hate having to hand out these trays, they're not good for the environment, for the animals, so we're looking at other alternatives, we just need more resources to know what's available." I have these to distribute to you guys. Put their record.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Martha Ainsworth?
Good evening. I'm Martha Ainsworth, and I'm the chair of the Prince George's Sierra Club Group. And I have to tell you, the Anarundel County Council is a lot more entertaining than the Prince George's County Council.
Thank you.
I'm going to start coming here more often. I came here prepared to talk about the experience in Prince George's County, and I'm not going to go into the details, because a lot of it is in Rick Kissel's testimony. I want to contest something that was discussed here. But let me just say, in Prince George's County, we are monitoring the implementation of the foam ban. It's up at around 90%, and the 10% that are left are people that didn't know about it, because there's a lot of turnover in managers and so forth in businesses. So it's going on very well, no one has been fined. When they're informed of it, within 30 days, they get rid of their foam, and they're in compliance. And this is also true in Montgomery County. I just want to counter this point about the cost, the cost of the restaurants. You know, we are paying, taxpayers are paying to put in the landfill all that foam. I mean, taxpayers are already paying for this. They're paying a tipping fee, or if you have a transfer station. I know there's a landfill in Millersville. So it's not as if it's free to the taxpayer. And how much would it cost to clean up the ocean? It's almost, it's almost impossible to pay, it's almost impossible to do. Now, I just wanted to point out that there've been, there's a study at MDE, Maryland Department of Environment, did a study of landfill composition in the state, using all these different surveys. And about a quarter to a third of what's in the landfills cannot be recycled or composted. The rest can, can be diverted. But these cups are in the quarter to one-third that cannot be diverted from the landfill. And they weigh, these cups weigh as much as these, this is eight ounces, and this is, the volume is huge. So it's taking up a lot of space in your landfill and filling it up quickly.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fink. Appreciate it. I'm going to dismiss this panel and call six more names, please, then would you folks come down? Brooke, excuse me, Brooks Shandelmeyer, Callan Benson, Alex Shachnowitz, Melvin Thompson, Paul Poe, and Mike Levy. All right, thanks. We'll get him in the next call. Thank you, Mr. Shandelmeyer. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. For the record, my name is Brooks Shandelmeyer. I live at 40 Iron Stone Court in Annapolis, Maryland. I am here to testify in favor of the polystyrene ban, for the reasons listed in much greater detail before me about the pollution impact and the toxic impact on our wildlife. It is just a common sense measure, and by banning it, we save a lot in taxpayer money through cleanup of litter in our road sides, in our ditches, and in our streams, creeks in the bay. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Benson? Mr. Benson? No? Is there Mr. Callan Benson? No? Mr. Shachnowitz?
Good evening. I'm Alex Shachnowitz, Chief Operating Officer, Anarundel County Public Schools. We are a business whose business happens to be public education. As an educational institution, obviously, we take great pride in teaching environmental literacy, environmental stewardship, eco-sensitivity from the construction to the courses we offer. However, tonight, I do want to focus on the other part of my introduction, and that is business. We are also a business. Our food and nutrition services operation is funded partially by the taxpayers. In fact, the federal government participates in funding 58% of our food and nutrition services program, the state 4%. The sale of our commodity, 38%. How much does the county government, Anarundel County Government, contribute to our food and nutrition services operations? Zero cents, $0.00. So we took a look at the different food containers that we utilize. This is what we utilize. We are a low-bit operation, I will say that. Three cents apiece, right? It's only half. This is expanded styrofoam or polystyrene. The next low-bit option, this one, six cents, double, and I'll be happy to leave these behind as artifacts, double. The next version up, eight cents, a little bit better quality, far less absorbent, a lot more visually palatable possibly. And the one probably that most youngsters would not take a terrific aversion to is this version, 10 cents. So you're saying three cents versus six cents versus eight cents versus 10 cents, maybe not a big deal. Not a big deal until I asked my folks to pull up, how many servings did we have last year? You take that small delta, you multiply times that huge number. It is a huge number. The last thing I want to say is, we did talk to our waste disposal, and once it is contaminated with a food product, it is biodegradable, it is not disposable. Our waste hauler will not take this in terms of a recyclable material once it's been food contaminated. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, may I have a question, please? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shachnowitz, thank you for your testimony. You're aware, I'm sure, that other school districts in Maryland have transitioned away from foam. Have you spoken with them, and how do they absorb the cost differential?
We have spoken to them, and they've not absorbed it. They've passed it on. But again, in our, in our industry, I cannot, a large percentage of my population is either free or reduced lunch. I can't pass it along to them. So, 100 percent of the cost is going to be borne by a small subset of my population, and that is the full rate-paying customers.
And can you, can you tell, I haven't bought a school lunch in a number of years. Can you tell me, what does a school lunch cost today? Full price?
$3.50.
$3.50. So, then, the difference potentially would be $3.53 if, if the next lowest cost.
It would basically double, because again, I can't spread it across 100 percent of my population, just my full rate paying.
And then, I just want to be sure that I understood. So, you said five million servings in that neighborhood. So, that means essentially, you, you guys are putting five million of those trays in the waste stream each and every year?
Yes, and we will continue to still put that same amount into the waste stream because it cannot be recycled.
But it would be a different material. It would not be foam.
It's a different material, but they cannot, our recycler, our recycler will not touch these once they've been food contaminated.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpauer. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm Melvin Thompson. I represent the Restaurant Association of Maryland. We too are opposed to this. I only have two minutes, so I'm going to talk as quickly as possible. First, let me try to clarify some misinformation. The alternatives cost double to three times more than the PS foam products we're currently using. I have a standard nine-inch clamshell foam container here. It's about nine cents a piece. I have a Vagast Fiber alternative, which is 19 cents each. I have your standard 12-ounce soup cup, which is eight cents each. I have a coated paper alternative, which is 20 cents each. That's about two and a half times the cost of this. And yes, it does add up. For an operator using about 500 units per week, this increase in just the soup cup alone would cost them over $3,000 more each year. In the clamshell, it would cost them about $2,600 more each year. And it is very difficult to pass those costs on to customers, because any time you raise pricing, you get less foot traffic into the restaurant business. And so, it's a big challenge. We use styrofoam containers because these containers are very good at insulating, keeping hot food hot, cold drinks cold. We use it for a practical reason. It is very durable. It holds up. It doesn't break down under steam. And there's been also some misinformation about the type of material and what it does in the waterway. I have some protective packaging here that comes in boxes when you get a product shipped to you. It breaks down into many little pieces, and we heard some testimony about that. Look at that mess. I kept it neat and tidy for you in this plastic bag, but the clamshell doesn't do that. It's a very durable product. I can smash it. It crushes, but it's coated. It remains largely intact. It doesn't break up into all of these pieces. We use this product because it's effective, and this mandate will disproportionately affect those restaurants that can afford it least. And it is for those reasons we oppose this legislation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you very much. Mr. Paul Poe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Poe at DART Container. I live in New Hampshire and had the privilege of coming down to Maryland quite often. And I want to hit on a couple of things. DART is a, an employer, a manufacturer, and a taxpayer in the state of Maryland. We expanded last year to our third facility in Harvard de Grace. Councilmember Trumpauer, you may be interested to know that there actually is foam recycling in Anarundel County. It's in Crofton. So, there, if, I think you need to, I would encourage you to look into that, the facility there. It's EPS Industry Alliance. You have an EPS foam manufacturer in your county. And I'm going to go quickly as well. DART has seven county recycling facilities throughout the state of Maryland, not just in Anarundel, but Cecil, Hartford, Baltimore, Howard, and Carroll. In my testimony, which wasn't included, but we'll send it to you, there were two articles in the New York Times this week about what is recyclable and what isn't recyclable. So, when you have the alternative to foam, and, and DART, don't, don't get me wrong, DART is the manufacturer of over 2,000 different products, from paper to plastic to red solo cups. And a red solo cup is the same thing as a foam cup. It's all number six polystyrene. So, it's, it's all the same. We have an environmental impact statement, and something else that was said earlier about the cost to taxpayers for landfilling. A paper polyline cup isn't recycled, and this New York Times article really points that out. And it is true that taxpayers pay for the end-of-life costs. So, if you go to a higher-cost product, and then, at the end of the life, if it's two and a half times more by weight going into a landfill, the taxpayer is going to pay, and they're going to pay more. And this is what densified foam looks like, if anybody's interested later. And I have a couple of examples of what recycled foam looks like.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a quick clarifying question?
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you. Mr. Poe, thank you for coming down to Maryland. I'm sure you enjoyed the trip. Got a nice day for you. You said that DART manufactures EPS?
We do.
In Anarundel County?
No, we, the counties that we are in are Carroll, Harvard, Hartford, and Caroline.
Okay. So, you have, you, DART has a facility in Anarundel, but you do not manufacture EPS in Anarundel?
No, that's correct. Our distributing facilities are Carroll and Hartford.
Understood. And then, my second thing was, so, you correctly, and I agree with you, said that red solo cups are polystyrene. That is true, but they are not polystyrene foam. And, and the definition in this bill is exclusive to polysty, expanded polystyrene foam. So, I just didn't want my colleagues getting the impression that this would affect red solo cups.
No, that's, that's correct. And, and I just pointed that out to say that chemically, they're both C8, H8, a chemical chain of polystyrene, or a, so, one is made, blown into foam, and one is molded, but they're exactly the same, and they have the same chemical properties. One is 95 percent air, and one is more solid. You're correct, though, in the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpauer. Thank you, Mr. Poe. Mr. Smith?
You said there was a recycling center in Crofton?
Yes.
For polystyrene, the foam?
It's, it's at 1298 Cronson Boulevard, Crofton, Maryland, at EPS Industries Alliance.
And that's, that's your, what do you do there, again? I'm sorry.
It's a drop-off. So, anybody in the county can take their foam there, whether DART makes it or not. So, and the foams, the waste of, the municipal solid waste stream typically has 1 to 2 percent of foam in it. Food service, what this would ban is a fraction of 1 percent. And, but at that drop-off, we take back everything at no cost to the county.
Do they compress it like that at that drop-off?
No, we take, we backhaul it to our facility in Leola, Pennsylvania, and, and we recycle it there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso.
On the recycling thing, so, what happened, I'm taking this as clean, is what's coming to you, and if it's a situation that it has, you know, been contaminated, food, what happens in that situation?
We take it all back. We have a wash-and-dry facility in Leola where anything is washed. One of the interesting things that you'll read in that New York Times article, most people don't realize, is that a pizza box is not recyclable because it's contaminated with oil. Foam does not absorb those materials, and it's easily washed and cleaned, whereas paper, a paper cup, like you get at Starbucks, it's, a paper cup at Starbucks is, and we make products for them. I'm not badmouthing any product here. Don't get me wrong. It's 10 percent plastic by itself, and if it wasn't, the coffee would leak through it. And to recycle a paper hot cup, it has to be boiled in water, and that plastic has to be stripped out. And the energy-intensive process of that, and, and you can read more about this yourself, don't take my, just my word for it, but paper cups and other polyline product, paper products, aren't recycled, because it's too energy-intensive, costs too much, and they go into the landfill, and they weigh more by weight. And again, back to the taxpayer, it's more at the tipping fee when, when it's landfilled, because in, in Anarundel County, you don't have a county-wide composting facility that will take food service products along with yard waste, organics. Often, Prince George's County has just initiated a new county-wide program, but it's for organics only, not food service with the organics. And so, if, if you are mandating a compostable or recyclable product, I would ask the county to consider that it be able to handle, at the end of the life of those products, if you're going to say it's got to be compostable or recyclable, the county composts it or recycles it, because it is no better, and it's actually worse for the taxpayer, because it's going to weigh more going into a landfill. And nothing in a landfill these days biodegrades. They're hermetically sealed. There's no oxygen. It's an aerobic digestion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just point of order. I think he's, he's overextended his answer to the councilman's question. I mean, he...
No, you got it. You did a great job. Let me ask, let me ask you one thing.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Trumpauer.
So, tomorrow, if I was to get a, a big rollback in our recycling facilities and filled with styrofoam, and Anarundel County delivered to you, is it free?
Well, it's, if you take it to the drop-off in the county...
In Crofton?
Yes.
So, we don't, so we don't, so in other words, you're telling me that all recyclable items, because they, we put a big roll-off container there, and they put styrofoam of any kind in there and bring it to you, you guys won't charge anything to take it?
That's absolutely 100 percent correct.
How about that? You listening there, Mr. Phipps? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso, and thank you, Mr. Poe.
Thank you.
Mr. Levy?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, my name is Mike Levy with the Plastics Food Service Packaging Group. We represent companies that make plastics and paper food service products. I'll speak very quickly. You have a very detailed information here on every aspect that you heard today. I'm here to kind of also talk about some of the misinformation out there, but more importantly, really make a case on why we oppose this, because, just as Paul Poe said, this is being recycled. You heard tonight that there's a possibility of DPW looking at Northeast Western, expanding the program. There's a program called the Foam Recycling Coalition that has issued grants to buy that densifier equipment. They issue grants of up to $50,000, so that if Anarundel County, for instance, wanted to add that piece of equipment, and yes, it can be done through single stream, you don't have to have another separate system to it. There's 1 million more people that are now recycling polystyrene foam in about 15 companies from this grant. So, again, it's just something the industry's trying to do. Another issue I want to talk about quickly is litter. And I do agree that litter is a problem. We agree. We come up with ways of reducing litter. It's not a polystyrene problem. It's, it's a litter problem. Polystyrene makes up about 1 and 1/2 percent. This idea of environmentally-friendly litter makes no sense at all, because we know what's worked from litter experts, including what we did in Baltimore years ago with the neighborhoods, is you have to change behavior and get, get all litter cleaned up, and we've supported programs that do that. The other thing quickly that I'll talk about is that polystyrene is completely safe, not only as the FDA approved it, but health agencies and everything have, have also done that. And finally, we also agree 100 percent that polystyrene does not belong in the ocean. But more importantly, our industry is committed to working globally and in the U.S. with Ocean Conservancy. We're doing research in Woods Hole to really find out what happens with plastics. And then, finally, on biodegradability, you don't want products to biodegrade, because if you think about it, nothing biodegrades in a landfill, and if it just ends up in a landfill, you're paying more for a non-biodegradable. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Thank you very much for your testimony. I'm going to dismiss you gentlemen from, from the table, please. And is Mr. Clark here? Anthony Clark? Why don't you come down? And also, Lorenzo Bellamy? Mr. Bellamy? Mr. Clark, why don't you go first? Name and address, please, in two minutes.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Anthony Clark. I live at 2001 Warner Terrace, Annapolis. I'm also a co-owner of a couple of restaurants here in the county, one in the city. This is a tough one, I think you have in front of you to decide against, or decide upon. I'm here to talk about our restaurants in particular, but I'm also a member of the Restaurant Association and understand the difficulties that other restaurants have in weighing what they should do. But for our sake, or for what we do, it's part of our culture that we brought up in our restaurants, and we've become environmentally friendly, and we believe it's the right thing to do for us as a restaurant operation. So, we've accepted the additional costs that it has caused us to move away from polystyrene and even as much as plastic, using compostable materials, as well as composting our food waste from one of our restaurants that we're able to do from at the moment. So, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of the bill, but I'm, I really do sympathize with other restaurants that have to use this type of product for quality of the food, and as well as, you know, just its own packaging that it actually leads to. And, you know, I'll conclude my testimony here, but I'd, I'd be willing to give any other information with regard to why we've absorbed that kind of cost, and, you know, information on our customers and how they've appreciated getting that packaging in paper bags, compostable materials, and even, we're moving now onto paper straws. So, we're eliminating straws as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grasso?
I have a question. What's the name of your restaurant?
Galway Bay in town here, Kalarni House.
What is it now?
Galway Bay.
Galway Bay in Annapolis, Kalarni House in Davidsonville, Brian Baru in Severna Park.
Wow, great for you guys. I'm going to make sure I stop in there and eat there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fink?
Mr. Grasso, did you not hear me say I did it too? You're going to eat my restaurants? I mean, I got slack for it. He gets the congratulations, nice job.
Maybe his hamburger tastes better.
Obviously, just cheese.
Thank you.
I'm going to have the ethics department on.
I was, too.
Let's return. Mr. Bellamy?
How much is his burger? For you?
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and members of the council. Lorenzo Bellamy with Bellamy Gin here on behalf of DART Container Corporation. You heard from DART earlier. So, I'm not much more to add, was already testified to, except I do want to let you know, I don't think Mr. Poe had a chance to tell you, that we do agree, and I think most of the people in this, in this council agree, that polystyrene is recyclable, and it does come back in, you know, profitable, commercial-grade products such as rulers, crown molding, actually, this is picture frames, and crown molding. So, it is a commercialable, commercial viable product that can come back in products that we use every day. The densifier that we were talking about actually takes polystyrene and basically turns it into this block here. And this block is what's sent off to a manufacturer that in turn takes this and turns it into the products that I showed you before. So, it is recyclable. I think most of you would agree to that. One of the things I would like for you to consider, before you move on this bill, I'm asking you to slow down and really think about this, and perhaps even look at a study and talk to all the stakeholders about some of the alternatives that exist. Obviously, we oppose this bill and are asking for you to look at recycling. I think the county has already testified, the administration has testified, that they prefer and would like to see a recycling program. And the densifier is one of those products, a manufactured product, that can actually turn the polystyrene into a recyclable, commercial-grade product. And there are grants that are available. So, the cost to you, the cost to your taxpayers would be de minimis, okay? We're talking about, the product probably costs about, I'm sorry, the machine probably costs around $30,000 to $50,000 to use. And there are grants that are available that this body, that the county can apply for. And so, we've talked to the county about this and look forward to engaging even further. The last thing I would like to say is that, if you do look at this bill, consider exempting nonprofits and those who provide services to vulnerable individuals. I think they would be hurt the most, and I'll just conclude with that and urge them...
Thank you very much, Mr. Bellamy. Appreciate your...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fink?
I've said a lot tonight. Go ahead.
Mr. Smith? Oh, it's Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, go ahead. No, I'll go.
Is there an indemnifier anywhere in the region?
Densifier?
Or a densifier?
I don't think there is any one in the region. They have not applied for, in the state of Maryland, for this particular thicker product, a particular machine. But it is available. We've told folks that this grant is available for them to use, to apply for. And I think the deadline, Mike Levy, who was testifying before, I think, didn't get the deadline, Mike Levy, who was testifying before, I think, didn't get a chance to talk about it, but I believe that the application process is currently ongoing now, and I think it ends around the end of July.
Is there information in your package?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Bellamy.
Information is in your package.
I can't do that.
Well, I mean, partially because I was curious. I know that there are some other, I guess amendments coming up, but I was curious about seeing if visiting one, just because I was interested in how that process worked, or if it worked, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Before, before, Mr. Grasso, just one second. And I'm sorry, the reason you can't do that is because it doesn't make it clearly, accurately into the record, okay? So, thank you. Mr. Grasso.
The, now, like I said, I'm, I'm trying to learn here what, basically what it's about. So Mr. Smith's talking about a densifier, is that a machine or something that busts up the styrofoam to make it heavy? Because I'm sitting here thinking, and all the styrofoam goes into a rollback, but it has no weight to it.
Right.
So they got to pack it in there, and I'm thinking, all right, well, now we're going to pay somebody, you know, a truck maintenance to bring it to this Crofton area where it's going to get washed, recycled, wherever the case may be. So how do you get weight into that truck? Because it's basically just a bunch of air, right, within the product? So what do you do?
True. So the densifier, Councilman, the densifier essentially is, from my understanding, I'm not a scientist, I'm a lawyer, so I'll try to make this as clear as possible. To my understanding, that a densifier is a machine that basically crushes the polystyrene. It basically takes all the air out of it and crushes it, and then it turns it into these, to these blocks here, which is a, I don't want to come up and give this to you, but it's a relatively heavy, heavier block than what you see when you normally get just a piece of polystyrene. So the densifier basically crushes, it's a machine that crushes the polystyrene and turns it into these blocks. These blocks actually didn't turn into, they, the manufacturer will take these blocks and turn them into pellets, and it's the pellets that actually they use to recycle and to make the manufacturer's commercial-grade products.
So in either case, so if you turn around and we had a bunch of styrofoam dishes or styrofoam trays with food and all that stuff in there, that would, the densifier is still going to do to it, right?
Absolutely.
Put it in there, and, and the gentleman, where's he at, the one that has the Crofton outfit? Come on up, sir, if you don't mind. The reason why I do it is, you know, get on the microphone so everybody can hear you. I'm just trying to get this all down, because tomorrow's going to be an interesting day for Anaronda County. So basically, you would take it like that? So, I mean, would it be better for us to get a densifier and make that, and then send it to you like that?
It would be more helpful and more efficient for shipping. The densifier, this is just one segment of kind of an ingot. They come out like this.
Sure.
And foam is 95% air, as you know, and, and so this, just compresses it down, and I'd be happy to share with this.
No, I can, I can, I pretty much get the concept.
And it comes out like this, and the, the folks that have densifiers, put them on pallets, put them in rows and crisscross them, and when they get a pallet full, they wrap them up, and we send a truck out, and we take them back to our.
That's interesting. We have a baler in Anaronda County for our cardboard. So what, and I'm throwing a densifier, what does that go for? How much we talk?
Around $50,000.
$50,000, that's it?
Mr. Poe?
Okay.
Do me a favor and say your name again for the record.
Yes. Paul Poe, Dart Container Corporation.
Thank you.
New Hampshire.
Thank you very much. Okay, are we?
So really, what we got is if we, if we were to get into the recycling thing, we really need to get the densifier, because we wouldn't be able to pack that styrofoam enough in there, and then we, and if we were to use a trailer or something, we'd have to have some type of cover that would go over, it would blow everywhere, right?
Well, it depends, because like I mentioned earlier, the seven recycling drop-off, foam recycling drop-offs we have in Maryland now, there are no densifiers, and they're put in a bin, like you were talking about, the roll-off, and we come and pick them up whenever the county calls us, or the, the person operating that property calls us and said, we got a truckload, and we just take it back, and right now, without, without being densified.
So if we put a roll-off at our recycling facilities and fill it with styrofoam, you guys are going to come pick it up?
We already do, yeah.
For Anaronda County now?
Well, the one in Crofton, yeah, it's in Anar, Crofton's in Anaronda.
No, what I'm saying is, is that, the impression I'm getting is, is that if we recycled this, we got to bring the styrofoam to you, to Crofton. Is that what you're saying?
The, the process is more complicated.
Mr. Bell, I'm sorry. I just want to, just as a point of order, try to bring this to a conclusion. The, the, the process, Mr. Grasso, where, where are we going here? Where do we? I don't, I don't.
That's, that's fine.
No, I don't want to interrupt, but I really apologize.
We can have a conversation off.
That's fine. Councilman Smith, it's not call and vote tonight anyway, so unless the amendments don't pass, but that's fine.
And I'm happy to follow up with any questions that you have in particular.
Yeah, and before you leave tonight, please leave me a phone number, I can reach you, okay?
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, we'll dismiss these gentlemen, and is there anybody else that wants to testify on this matter? Please come forward right now.
You know, they wouldn't be recycling by no sign if it wasn't for that big of a date.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
While these witnesses are coming up, I believe one of the folks you called was Ms. Callan Benson on an earlier panel, and I met her before, and she had constructed a visual aid that, that she was not allowed to bring in, but I did go out and speak with her, and I just realized that that was the name that didn't come up. So she, she had come intending to testify, and I encouraged her to send written testimony to the council. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. All right, let's, let's begin with Ms. Johnson, please. Name and address.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I appreciate the council's interest and concern about pollution and protecting the environment, and the thoughtful testimony that a lot of witnesses have presented. So rather than repeating some of those things, I'd like to raise a question about thinking back to when I was a child, almost before styrofoam was invented, and certainly before it was used, you know, in any kind of business situation. We carried a tin cup at Girl Scout camp, and the Boy Scouts did the same, and the military have a mess kit. And I'm thinking, well, if people want to do a carryout, is there some sort of a consideration or a possible alternative to creating, you know, more disposable wastes? Some sort of alternative thing where, you know, we say in scouting, when you go hiking into the wilderness, you carry it in, you carry it out. You don't leave, you know, leave no trace. So, you know, if you paid for the food and you want to take it home, you know, what are some of the other alternatives? And I raise this as a question for you to consider and think about, since you don't have enough other stuff to worry about.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ma'am, would you go next?
Good evening. My name is Liz Buxton. I am the executive director of the South River Federation, nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting and preserving the South River and the watershed. I am here tonight to support Bill 4918, and I'm not going to read my testimony, but I want to let you all know that I have submitted my letter, and it highlights many of the points that have been made, but I did want to call your attention to one thing, and that is, the South River Federation has installed, as a demonstration, a trash trap in Crap Creek. And we did this over a year ago to demonstrate the impact that this legislation can have. And over the last year, we've been going out every, every time there's a rain event, and these photos.
Thank you.
Show you the amount of trash that is collected, and many of the circled items here in the photograph are the EPS foam items. So as you can tell, these items don't get recycled, they end up being washed into the South River, and this is something that we're very concerned about. So I'm here tonight just to reiterate that we strongly support proactive policies such as these to eliminate EPS foam pollution, and to bring us another step closer to clean water in strong communities throughout Anaronda County and Maryland. And I just want to also just highlight one other thing in my letter, and that is that there are many robust peer-reviewed studies that indicate risks to filter feeding organisms like oysters and mussels from these microplastics in the water column that come from the degradation of EPS foam. And just to end on that note, these animals are animals that we eat, so it does impact humans.
Thank you. Thank you for your, your work, and thank you for your testimony. Sir, good evening. Yes, sir.
Hi.
Please.
Paul Murphy, 105 Northwest Street. I'm a member of the Environmental Commission for the City of Annapolis and local concerned citizen. I think we, sharp minds here have described the basic problem of a portion of the litter that does not break down, not as easy to recycle as paper, aluminum, or glass. So I think we understand the overall problem, trying to look at it a little bit more on a business side or just society. People, you know, change takes effort, but if we look back over the last couple of decades, meetings throughout the country, aerosol sprays, they dug in for a while. We don't have aerosol, as many aerosol sprays. Acid rain, we thought that would ruin the economy 35 years ago. We're okay with less mercury in the air. Auto pollution needs no further conversation. Post-consumer paper, there's no longer microbeads in our toothpaste, our, our face wash, and locally, there's no longer copper in bottom paint. It's a great way to keep your bottom clean, but it stresses the creek. So, you know, over time, society has had to learn to do the right thing. Sometimes markets drive that, sometimes the government pushes in the correct direction. So it is clear that a great business model is externalizing costs, and that's a lot, that's what's going on here. And I'm a small business owner, I'm not faulting them, it's just part of what we do. Externalizing the cost is an easy way to improve the bottom line. But, you know, businesses are going to have to learn to innovate a little bit, and the other part of that is, you know, repurposing the waste stream. We have businesses like Veterans Compost and Reformed Organics that are growing businesses, taking the composting, which could undercut the waste hauling at the schools, because yeah, they might pay more for the 6 million trays they throw in the landfill every year, cost goes up a little bit. They compost some of their food waste, they can lower their costs there. So there's some innovation and change going on, but I think it's doable if we put our minds to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate it. Ma'am?
Yeah, my name is, my name's Sidney Jacobs. I live at 2302 Lackawanna Street in Adelphi, and I'm here as the chair of the Sierra Club Zero Waste Committee and to support Bill 4918. The young lady here is passing out something that I found in yesterday's paper. It's from the travel section, and it is an article about how cruise ships, resorts, governments all over the world are ending the use of their single-use plastics and packaging. They're getting rid of plastic bags, and plastic bottles, and straws, and plastic containers, because they recognize the huge problem that we have with plastics in the ocean. So I hope you get a chance to read through that and see what other people around, around the world are doing, even in countries where it might be considered a hardship. We are probably always going to have a little problem, as you've heard, but EPS foam is particularly insidious. It doesn't degrade, ever. The clamshell that Mr. Thompson was breaking up, you can imagine that crashing around in the waves, breaking into smaller and smaller pieces. Those smaller and smaller pieces do never, they never disappear. They're always there. They become part of the microplastic soup that is killing animals and marine life, and it is existing in the tissues of food fish that we humans consume. And so the question is, is a few cents extra that consumers might have to pay worth the damage to our fragile ecosystems that we, as human beings, depend on? I'd also like to counter the claim that Dart manufactures foam in Maryland. In fact, Dart does make many alternative containers. It does not manufacture EPS foam. The fact that they do produce other containers, if there's a ban on foam, will probably increase the sale and possibly increase jobs for those alternative products.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all. We'll dismiss this panel, and we'll now close the public hearing on, on Bill Number 4918. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4918.
Bill Number 4918, An Ordinance Concerning Licensing Food Service Facilities Polystyrene Food Service Products.
Okay, there are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment downgrades a violation of the ban on polystyrene foam products to a Class E civil offense.
Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is my amendment. I think part of the reason was I am sympathetic to the industry that is involved with polystyrene containers and for any bill, because this is something that no one has ever been able to prepare for, you know, you know, Class C provisions are, you know, $500, I think, for the first fine when they're issued. I know that there's going to be a leeway here if this thing passes, but this makes it $50 instead of the 500, and then 100, and then 500 at the top end after the third incident. And so that's what this provision is for, to reduce that penalty for, for the violation of this type of incident.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the acknowledgement that Mr. Smith is a softie, I will accept this as a friendly amendment.
I think for me, I just, I really do try to find a balance between, you know, the business community and environment. I think we could operate in a world where both exist, and so with any legislation that impacts, I'd certainly want to make sure it's, it doesn't impact or hurt them to the point where, you know, we're putting folks out of business. That I am certainly not a fan of.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fink.
Mr. Smith, I appreciate that, but once you make it illegal, it's illegal. I mean, just saying, hey, we're going to make it a little bit less of a fine, it doesn't make it easier for the restaurants. You know, if this is just a feel-good, and it makes you feel like we're doing something to help those businesses, you're not. It does nothing, because at the end of the day, it's, it's illegal, and restaurants are going to say, well, it's a $50 fine, I'm going to keep doing it. I mean, you're going to eliminate it. So, I mean, if you're going to do it, go all in, don't go in, make yourself feel a little better because you made it a little bit less of a fine.
You're more than welcome to vote against the amendment.
And I, and I greatly appreciate your permission to do that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
I'm sorry, I was distracted myself. We have, we have another amendment. Please, Madam Secretary, please read the Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment extends applicability of the ban of polystyrene foam products by four months to January 1, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair, this is also my amendment.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
The reason we have both of these amendments, quite frankly, outside of me wanting to sort of put my imprint on what I thought was, to make this more palatable, if this was to go into place, I also wanted more time to, I know the school, Alex, he left already, and then one of the questions I was going to ask him before he left was, I don't know if he stated whether the school system was for or against, I know he talked about the business, but he didn't make a declarative statement on where they were on that process. Did you guys hear that?
Yeah.
I didn't. You said it again?
They're against.
Did he state that?
Yes, they said they want to keep their $5 million.
Okay, I was just curious. And so part of this was to do more research, because I didn't have the ability to meet with some of the other folks who were interested in, on both sides of the aisle, quite frankly, who were interested in this, this particular deal. And so also giving them more time to, to implement this to January of 2020, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, and I appreciate the amendment by the sponsor, or the maker of the amendment. I will, as, as the lead sponsor of Bill, I will accept this also as a friendly amendment, although I think that's it. January 2020 is enough time, so I, you know, I think that's okay, but I'll accept it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Anybody else? Madam Secretary, please read the title. Where are we? Please read the title of Amendment Number Two.
I should call the roll now. I should call the roll now.
Please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
I will. Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 4918, as amended, will be heard on June 18, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5018.
Bill Number 5018. An Ordinance Concerning Animal Control: Dogs, Outdoors, Shelters, Tethering.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso is the sponsor.
Well, no sense to go through the whole dog and pony show. Once again, no pun intended. But everybody knows pretty much what we're trying to accomplish here. And with that being said, haven't said that in a while, we're moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of Council Bernie Marzick and County Executive's Office, with me table Karen Ritter from the Office of Law. Captain Hassan Pushes around, I believe, from the Police Department. We're supportive of this bill with amendments that we'll offer at the appropriate time, and we'll go through that in more detail with the Council.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Are there any questions, comments? We'll now open the public hearing. We have five people that have signed up. Jan Camerata, Lee Hughes, Emily Hovermail, Laura Thiever Henry, and Jen Webb. Would you please come down at this time? Thank you for joining us this evening. Thanks for your patience. Jan Camerata.
Here.
Name and address, please, in ten minutes.
Good evening. Jan Camerata, 112 Howard Avenue, Arnold, Maryland, 21012.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just like speeders, we mentioned earlier, speeders need laws to keep them in line, so do animal abusers, I believe. Some years back, as some of you may know, I got into a little bit of trouble trying to help this dog, the owner, who has spent his life in this cage. I saw him during a hurricane, still left out in there, and it's been my mission to try to do something to help him and dogs like him. And I know we can't have too many laws, but just like speeders need to have something to rein them in, so do animal abusers, excuse me. Too many dogs are kept in miserable situations prompting more calls to animal control and neighborhood friction. We need legislation to allow animal control to follow their mission and protect animals from abusive, isolated, and disgusting situations that some irresponsible owners inflict upon their animals. I also had a thought of having some kind of outside dog licensing or hunting dog licensing. If people want to choose to keep their dogs outside, there should be a little more expensive, or a lot more expensive license to do this, which will enable animal control to come make checks from time to time because animal control cannot gain access. When the neighbors know these dogs are in abusive situations, animal control cannot gain access. So perhaps a little pricey little license, then animal control can stop by now and then to make sure the license is up to date and the animal is of proper weight. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Camerata. Lee Hughes.
I want to refresh your memory. If you can pass this around, you might remember.
Madam Secretary, thank you. Oh, name and address, sir, would you say?
Lee Hughes, 109 Victor Parkway in Apples, Maryland.
Thank you.
After reading this, it still doesn't state whether the dogs, as you can see in the picture, the dogs are up about two or three feet above the ground. It doesn't say anything in here about them being back on the ground. Will they still be housed the way they are in the picture if they have enough area? I would like to see the dogs get out and roam around the grass and stuff like that. You know, I don't know. It's not in here.
You're telling us what you'd like to see.
And I'm reading this, it doesn't state whether it's off the ground or not.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grasso.
We defined what a doghouse is, and that hut or little thing that those people have that is not even close to the new definition. That's the first thing. It also said there must be an egress and ingress out of that. So in your situation where those beagles are just kept and that dog 24 hours a day, that doghouse or whatever heck you want to call that thing, that is not what this new law does. This new law turns around and it defines what a doghouse is. In your situation, it's two screen walls defines what a doghouse is. It's got protection now. It also has waterproof roof. It also, if I'm not mistaken, the lawsuit should be an egress and ingress out of that doghouse so that they're not just stuck in that doghouse. So I figured I covered most of what you wanted.
Out of the doghouse would be on the ground, then?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. One other thing I forgot. Oh, it's 100 square feet, which is good. I mean, they don't have that now.
Yeah, this bill is a huge jump for an internal county, a big one. And the administration has done a great job coming home with Robin Catlin and giving other things to make this bill even better. I'm telling you, this is a home run for us.
Now, in 45 days.
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir. I think this.
The Council will vote, assuming it passes, then it's 45 days becomes law, or the County Executive signs it or not. But the administration is on board, so I want to compliment the County Executive for standing with us and the people, okay, on the animal rights. So this is a very good thing. But it is 45 days, that's the only thing.
So they'll be there another 45 days?
Then you have not seen those dogs out of that house since then, since we've had our last conference.
No, not at all.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Ms. Hoverdale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Emily Hovermail with the Humane Society of the United States, on behalf of our thousands of members and supporters in Anarundale County. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of Bill Number 5018. Experts have long agreed that tethering is not conducive to the health and welfare of dogs. It's common for continuously tethered dogs to endure physical ailments as a result of being continuously tethered. They're vulnerable to insect bites and parasites, are at a high risk of entanglement, strangulation, and harassment, or attacks by other animals and people. You don't have to, you have to, you can look beyond the animal welfare community to back up this information. Back in June of 1996, the U.S. Department of Agriculture issued a statement against tethering. Our experience in enforcing the Animal Welfare Act has led us to conclude that continuous confinement of dogs by a tether is inhumane, they say. A tether significantly restricts a dog's movement. A tether can also become tangled or hooked on the dog's shelter and structure or other objects, further restricting the dog's movement and potentially causing injury. A dog kept chained in one spot for hours, days, months, or even years suffers immense psychological damage in addition to being at risk for severe physical damage. An otherwise friendly and docile dog which kept continuously chained becomes neurotic, unhappy, anxious, and often aggressive. As a result, tethering is not only bad for dogs, it's a high-risk factor in serious dog bites and attacks. Dogs unable to retreat from perceived or real threats can act out aggressively when approached. Dogs feel naturally protective of their territory, and when confronted with a perceived threat, they respond according to their fight-or-flight instinct. When a tied dog is unable to take flight, their only option is to fight, attacking any unfamiliar animal or person who unwittingly wanders into his or her territory. Again, the data backs this up. The Centers for Disease Control concluded in a study that the dogs most likely to attack are those that are chained. The CBC found that chained dogs are 2.8 times more likely to bite than non-chained dogs.
Thank you, Ms. Hovermail.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Laura, I hope I say this name right, Thea Henry?
Thea Henry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Council members. My name is Laura Thea Henry. I'm a resident at 241 Kentucky Avenue, Pasadena, and I'm here to support Bill 50-18 regarding the dog outdoors shelters and tethering. Just to go along with what Ms. Hovermail stated, tethering is not only a cruel practice to the dogs, but it's a public safety hazard. Tethered dogs are more likely to become aggressive over time. This is partly because a tethered dog can't flee to safety if she's attacked or thinks she will be attacked. The dog can't escape the threat, and she feels she has no choice but to protect herself. Tethered dogs are also a risk to children, who are more likely to approach an unknown animal. Chaining also creates a hazard for dogs because they can become tangled and/or hang themselves. Isolated in backyards on tethers as short as a couple feet, these innocent animals are forced to endure the elements, attacks by animals and people, and perhaps, worst of all, solitary confinement. I just wanted to share some statistics with you. 19 states have laws restricting or banning dog tethering, as do about 215 local jurisdictions. Locally, the District of Columbia, Arlington County, Virginia, and Montgomery County, Maryland, have laws regulating tethering. Specifically, Montgomery County law allows no more than two hours tethered outside. So while people may approach this issue from different angles, those who love dogs and those who would prefer dogs to keep their distance can agree that tethering should be illegal. Please vote in favor for Bill 5018, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Ms. Jen Webb.
Good evening. Jennifer Loeb, 107, sorry, my handwriting. 107 Midland Road, Glenburne. I'm a lifelong resident of Anarundale County, and I'll probably be here forever. You already heard why this bill is important. I'm just here because this is an issue the community cares about, and this is important to my neighbors and the residents of Anarundale County. It's 2018, dogs are not law and orderments, they deserve to be treated with dignity, and we owe it to them to require the standards of care that this bill provides. So I ask you to support Bill 5018 with the amendments from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll dismiss this panel. Does anybody else want to testify on this matter? Please come down now. Sign your movement in the audience. We will close the public hearing on Bill 5018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5018.
Bill Number 5018. An Ordinance Concerning Animal Control: Dogs, Outdoors, Shelters, Tethering.
All right, there's amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
By the end of it. Amendment Number One. This amendment removes the definition of reasonable period, adds a definition of supervised, revises the tethering requirements to allow tethering of dogs under supervision, revises the requirements for outdoor dog shelters, and imposes minimum space standards for outdoor dog enclosures.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Marzick.
If I may, this is our amendment. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify but also strengthen the provisions that Mr. Grasso has put forward. I do want to just highlight a couple of things, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Mr. Marzick.
First is that this changes it from a time limit to supervised, so dogs that are tethered will be, must be supervised by the owner. It would be impossible for animal control to sit at a property for three hours and make sure that a dog is not taken off the leash, or is taken off the leash for that matter. Second, it clarifies the exceptions of, for when a dog may be tethered by an owner for a dog to use the restroom, or for a dog to exercise, making sure they're allowed to do both of those. Third, the bill keeps the shelter requirements, but it also adds another requirement that the dog must be provided with some sort of either natural or artificial shade. And lastly, it adjusts the size requirements for the enclosures when the dogs are kept outdoors to make the requirements different for different-sized dogs, and also to allow for different-sized requirements when there are multiple dogs in one shelter. So we would ask for your support of this amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, you just described one amendment and the different sections of one amendment.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Mr. Fink.
The, Mr. Marzick, the observation piece, I mean, if somebody's, if the dog owner's inside the house and the dog's outside, is, are they being?
Being supervised, yes.
That is being supervised?
Yes.
So how are you defining supervision? I'm sure it's in here, I just.
Direct observation of an owner.
So if you're inside, the dog's outside, that's in direct observation?
If you're able to see the dog, yes.
Okay. So as long as you're essentially on the property?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso.
Yeah, as Mr. Trumpauer said, myself as being the lead sponsor and the only sponsor, I just want to say I want to thank the administration for chiming in with their amendments, and I'm okay with all their adjustments because I just believe they made the bill even better than what it was.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 5018, as amended, will be heard on June 18, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5118.
Bill Number 5118. An Ordinance Concerning Disposition of Real Property Transfer to Government Entities, Governmental Entities.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpauer.
It's an administration bill. I'm a co-sponsor, so I'll yield to the panel.
Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of Council Bernie Marzick and County Executive's Office, with me table Samantha Harris and Christine Romans from Central Services, Jason Fetterman from the Office of Law. Bill 5118 allows for more expeditious transfer of property to other governmental entities. You'll remember we had a similar bill back in the fall. Other government entities acquire property for a public purpose in a time is frequently of the essence for this. So I think, thinking of road widens or stormwater, things like that, where other governments would be in need of our property. This creates a streamlined process to surplus and dispose of properties that have been identified by government entities that would be more efficient and cost-saving process. Once the property is identified, the new process will include the declaration of surplus property by the Central Services Officer, based on the polling of other county offices, departments, and agencies. Public works and wrecking parks will be polled to ensure there's no preservation or recreational suitability for the property. The legislation also includes a requirement for a reverter clause requiring the property be transferred back to the county if it is not being used for the purpose upon which it was originally sold. If the Council does not approve the future use of the property, this property will not be surplus when it comes to the Council for their approval. We hope this addresses the Council's concern we heard the last time. I'd like to thank Mr. Trumpauer for working with us to bring this bill back to the Council in hopefully a suitable form, and we ask for your support tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpauer.
I'll yield to Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Marzick is correct. After the last bill failed, and you may recall, I believe Mr. Grasso and myself were kind of vocal opponents because we were worried about potential loopholes where the property would be surplus but then ultimately end up in the hands of a development interest or something else that might not be in the county's best interest. And so the administration approached me to see whether we could lock that down, and this is the concept they came up with. I'm comfortable with this. I know that the auditor expressed a concern in her blue letter, and I believe that we'll see an amendment by the administration to address that. But I think the key here, and perhaps Mr. Marzick can give us an example of how this would be applied, but this is very small parcels, these are generally not buildable or developable, and perhaps you could reiterate that with a better articulation of what sort of properties we're dealing with.
Sure, it would probably be a small property that would be used for utilities, stormwater management, something of that nature. And what we would do is write it in the deed, and it would say essentially, if this property is not used for its intended purpose, this property would revert back to the county. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I read the blue letter, and I know there's an amendment coming, but I'm still concerned. And I just want to read specifically what this bill states. An agency, the federal, state, or local jurisdiction or quasi-governmental entity requests that the county transfer the property. Now, you're giving an example of a small property. Let's say it's 44 acres, and the Maryland Stadium Authority wants it. Could that be something? Or there's a water tower being built in the community? That's, you know, a debatable issue. So I just want to be specifically clear about what we mean, obviously, federal and state's pretty clear, but quasi-governmental entity. How is that defined in the code? What does that mean?
It could be the Housing Commission. That could be one of them. But I think the sticking point is that we would always bring it to you, and you would have an opportunity to accept or deny it. And then we would then bring it back if you decided not to approve it.
Okay, and then the second issue is, I know this bill was brought to us before, certainly we raised our concerns, and I will take consideration of the amendment, but what caused this bill to move forward? Are we having issues where we're not getting access to roads? I mean, there's a reason why a bill's introduced. I mean, there's a reason why a bill's introduced. Mr. Grasso, we just went over a bill where we have, you know, animal control and dog issues. What prompted this bill?
It currently takes a significant amount of time to go through all of the steps that we do for surplus property. We have found that a lot of the government agencies have projects that they want to get through the pipeline, and if we go through the normal process, it just takes a long time.
Okay. But is there a reason? Because the bill basically is to transfer free simple county-owned property without council approval. So you're removing the county council, so that's the hindrance? I'm just.
No, it's, the council is not being removed. What's happening is that normally it's a two-step process. We come to you, we surplus the property. Step two is then we come back and we dispose of the property. This is combining them into two steps. So we come to you and we say, we're going to dispose of property X to State Highway Administration because they want to widen the road. Council has the authority to approve that or deny that, and then it either moves forward or doesn't move forward. And if State Highway comes back and says, we're going to build townhouses instead of widening the road, then the property reverts back to the council because of the reverter clause, because they're not doing what was said in the deed that went along with the property.
So this is a legal question for Jason or for Amy. Can we clarify or, I guess, be a little bit more specific about what we mean about quasi-governmental entity? I mean, I'm just concerned about that.
Environmental services.
No, I understand, but I mean, is there anything that can be done to clarify that? I'm just concerned, again, with one particular group, but I just want to hear your opinion.
I mean, right now, quasi-governmental essentially means any group affiliated with the government. So, yeah, the Housing Commission is a perfect example of this. The Northeast Waste, Northern Maryland Waste Disposal Authority is another example. There are these little entities that are created by usually the state that have the imprimatur of government, but they have private components or something of that nature. I'm sure we could craft some sort of definition if that's what everybody wants to do, but right now, the test is something that is created and has the imprimatur of government with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No further questions? Oh, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Fetterman, is that, would that be like, would a private-public partnership be considered quasi-governmental?
Generally not. The governmental component of it would be considered a governmental concern, but when we're talking about quasi-governmental, we're talking about things that are usually an element or an arm of the state or local government. So there is some sort of governmental component. Again, the Housing Commission is the classic example of this. It has private components to it, but it's created by the state, it's organized by state law, and it's governed by the state.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anything further? If not, then we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wanting to testify? There's, I don't have a sign-up sheet, but if anybody wants to testify, please come Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm with the Council, Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have real concerns about this business of disposing of county-owned property, and I've had three cases that went before either the Board of Appeals or the Circuit Court. Two of them dealt with road, you know, basically, people wanted the county to give roads in Herald Harbor to private individuals so the road could be closed off. Valentine Trail leads to the water, and there were people who want, who have tried to close it off. That case was back in the early 2000s. I now see on Google Maps that it is now called Honeysuckle Trail, which alarms me a lot because back in the 80s, somebody got the county to give Honeysuckle Trail to the same persons. So now, apparently, they're trying to claim that, you know, the water access on Valentine Trail belongs in private hands. There was also an issue about encroachment on the, with a pier that blocked the water access for Herald Harbor that served the entire community, and in those days, there were 900 homes. Likewise, if you close off Valentine Trail, that serves 900 homes or served at that time, and there are even more now. I am also concerned about what some, in Herald Harbor, there is a case now where this developer bought several properties, and now he's created a homeowners association, except I can't find the documentation about how you create a homeowners association, and he wants to call this, you say these people have exclusive access to the water in a certain area. Well, they can't do that. It's public roads.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much.
Just to summarize.
Please, please summarize.
To summarize, the county officials don't seem to be able to identify where the private interests are located, the communities, the residents.
Thank you very much. The public hearing on Bill Number 5118 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5118.
Bill Number 5118, An Ordinance Concerning Disposition of Real Property Transfer to Governmental Entities.
Thank you. There's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment requires the resolution approving the declaration of property as surplus to explain the proposed use of the property.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second. So moved.
Discussion.